Welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, September 22nd, 2016, 7:30 PM, Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. Roll call please.
Yes. Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Reinhardt.
Here.
Mr. Here. Oh, thank you. Commissioner Munir.
He already said here for me.
Okay, I'll take that as I hear. And Chair Doe.
Present.
And note for the record that Commissioner Parker is out tonight.
But we have the substitute for Commissioner Parker. I'd like to introduce Commissioner Carl.
Very good.
No voting rights yet though. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent calendar. Please note that items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. Prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. Does anyone here wish to remove an item from the consent calendar?
No.
Nope.
So may I make, have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
I'll motion to adopt the consent calendar of the September 8th regular meeting.
I'll be a second person again. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oral communication. Oral communication is limited to a total of 15 minutes per speaker. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on an issue not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to written communications. I have no written communications. Does anyone here have any?
None.
None.
No.
Okay. Onto new business. Public hearing, 88 Thomas Avenue, design permit DP-2-15, grading permit EX-4-15, and secondary dwelling unit permit SDU-2-15. Design permit for development of a 4,008 square foot plus or minus single-family residence including garage and conversion of the existing family, single-family home to a 998 square foot plus or minus secondary dwelling and associated grading permit for grading of approximately 1,100 cubic yards on a 20,841 square foot ridge line site in the Brisbane Acres. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. The applicant proposes to build a new home and convert the existing home to a secondary dwelling unit at 88 Thomas Avenue. The new home would include approximately 3,600 square feet of living space and a 400 square foot garage. The conversion of the existing home to a secondary dwelling unit would reduce it from approximately 1,600 square feet to just under 1,000 square feet. The proposed redevelopment of this lot would include approximately 1,100 cubic yards of grading. The proposed single-family residence would be one to two stories. The secondary dwelling unit would be just one story. Both the proposed new single-family residence and the converted secondary unit would meet all of the applicable development regulations for the district and also for SDUs, of course. A proposal of the same basic design as this current proposal was approved by the Planning Commission in 2009 and then again in 2011 by approval of variances at that time. Those variances have since expired. Following the last variance, new provisions were adopted by city council requiring a design permit rather than a variance for development on ridge line lots within the Brisbane Acres. So a design permit is now the tool for the Planning Commission's review of this project instead of the variance process. The site is located on approximately half acre ridge line lot on the south side of Thomas Avenue. That is within the RBA, that's Brisbane Acres Residential Zoning District, and that's also within the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan area, also called HCP, and that's for the protection of endangered butterfly species. Since the site is within the HCP area, environmental study was previously undertaken per state SEQA guidelines and a mitigated negative declaration was also approved by the Planning Commission in 2009. That concluded that all the environment, all environmental impacts would be less than significant or reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures. The current proposal is substantially the same and the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration is, would still apply. By, also by way of background on the site in terms of the setting, Thomas Avenue runs along the border of the RBA district and the HCP, and four multi-unit apartment buildings are located across the street within the R3 district. These buildings are oriented lengthwise along Thomas Avenue, as you can see here, and they form a partial drop, backdrop to the site when viewed from the Bay Trail across, so looking from the east to the west. Thomas Avenue runs again along the ridge line with the saddle of the ridge being at the intersection of San Bruno Ave and Thomas Avenue. The topography through this site runs both down towards the east and the bay and down to the south towards 8 Thomas Avenue. The adjacent 8 Thomas Avenue is under construction following approval of that design permit nearly three years ago. Vacant land surrounds 88 Thomas to the north and east, as you can see in the image. The site has number of large trees and shrubs which, along with the apartment buildings behind, limit views across the, the site in this area of the ridge line to the San Bruno Mountain State and County Park behind, and we'll get into that a little bit later here. The existing single-family home on the subject site is located in the upper portion of the site, and you can see its, its roof in the image there, and the new home would be stepped down the site below that existing home. In order to approve a design permit, the Planning Commission must make a number of specific findings. That list of findings and discussion on each was provided in the agenda report, and I'll just highlight a few of those in a moment here. There are currently no findings in the municipal code for the commission's approval of the grading permit. In brief, the intent of the Planning Commission's review of grading is to address aesthetic issues which may arise, while the technical aspects of grading are addressed by the city engineer through the grading permit which would follow approval of these planning applications. There are also no specific findings for the secondary dwelling unit, but those are generally administrative permits approved by the planning director as long as development regulations can be met. It's bundled here because of the design permit to keep the package together. This application meets all of those development regulations as I noted previously. I'll, so I'll briefly discuss a few of the key findings, and again, the complete list is provided in your agenda report. First off is ridge line and hillside findings. Again, the proposed development is on a lot that's been identified in the ordinance's ridge line lot. However, since the proposed home is set down from the ridge line onto the flanks of the hillside, both the ridge line and hillside finding are addressed in the agenda report. The ridge line finding focuses on views across a ridge line to the state and county park behind, while the hillside finding addresses how a development fits within the topography of the site, and the proposal meets both of these findings. The new, new single-family home would be two stories on the north side of the lot. That portion of the house would be in front of the secondary dwelling unit as viewed from the Bay Trail. The home would step down to one story on the south side closest to 8 Thomas Avenue. This configuration fits well with the slopes of the lot and the existing development. That step-down configuration was arrived at through the, the previous variance process. Originally, the home was proposed to be two-story all the way across it. For this application, the single-family residence would be approximately seven and a half feet below the 35-foot maximum height for the two-story segment and approximately 17 and a half feet below the maximum for the one-story segment of the house, so it's well below the, the height limits. And for the secondary dwelling unit, the conversion from its existing state to a single-family home would reduce its height by approximately one and three-quarters feet, and that would be well under the maximum at just 18 feet in height. Both the single-family home and the secondary dwelling unit would fit well with the topography of the site and are designed to minimize potential visual impacts. The new home being set in the lower area of the site while maintaining the required 20-foot rear setback, so it's tucked as far down the slope essentially as, as possible there. Few comments on public views. Information is provided for the Planning Commission's review of public views through a couple different means in the staff report. The applicant has included a number of drawings which depict the design along with the photo As required per the zoning ordinance, the application, applicant also installed story poles to represent the height and location of the proposed home at the building's corners. And story poles, of course, were not done for the existing homes since that's already a higher elevation than what's proposed. Following the applicant's placement of story poles, staff took a series of photographs at 300-foot intervals along the Bay Trail for reference. Photos from the most visible locations were included in your agenda report. As indicated in the agenda report, the photos do not represent a real-life view. That can only be gained in person. In short, the field of view for the human eye is substantially greater than the camera lens, so when one is on the Bay Trail, a much wider view presents itself than is afforded by the photographs. Also, with the camera, one has the ability to zoom in and make the view of the site larger than life. Note also that the various trees located on the site make it difficult to see the existing home from off-site locations, including the Bay Trail, and that vegetation along with the existing apartment buildings behind largely excludes views across this segment of the ridge line. Given the long distances, the mix of existing development, vegetation, and the relatively low profile of the proposed home on the lot, the view impacts to the state and county park behind the site are not considered significant, and the public views are substantially preserved and not significantly affected. Few findings on scale, form, and proportion landscaping energy. The, it meets all of these findings. The proposal has a strong, modern design, both in its form and materials, and would be set in a landscape that would be water-conserving and complement the home's design. There is a material sample board that is on the table there, and we can show you that after the staff report. If you'd like to pass that around, we can do that if you haven't seen it yet. There's extensive reliance on California native plants. Okay, thanks. There's reliance on California nat, native plants in the concept landscape plan, allowing for indoor and outdoor enjoyment of the space. The building's flat roofs and cantilevered first floor are strong elements in the overall aesthetic of both the new and this, new single-family home and the secondary dwelling unit, while at the same time, the flat roof serves to reduce the mass of the structures and reduce potential view impacts as viewed from off-site. The expansive lightly tinted windows along the east side of both the single-family residence and the secondary unit will afford passive solar warming of the home's interior in the morning hours while allowing for occupants' enjoyment of bay views as well, of course. This orientation of the home on the site and morning capture of daylight fits well with Brisbane's moderate climate. The windows also present a sense of openness, both from the interior and is viewed from So some images quickly, so that's the secondary dwelling unit elevations colored there and a couple views of the, of the main home. The landscaping would also provide for a potential habitat, habitat corridor along the rear edge, the east edge of the site, consistent with the previously approved HCP operating plan. Also regarding the landscape, additional documentation will be required concurrent with the building permit to demonstrate compliance with the city's water conservation and landscaping ordinance, so that's yet to be addressed. It looks overall that landscaping is low water use, but we'll, we'll have to confirm that, and so there may be minor modifications to that. With regards to grading, the proposal would fit well with the topography of the site, and its design avoid large exposed retaining walls, especially at the site edges. The highest retaining wall is internal to the site, and that's adjacent to the parking and walkway area to the house, and that would not be readily visible from off-site and would be screened with landscaping. Grading would result in removal of some oak trees and several new oak trees, and California buckeye trees are proposed to be planted as replacements. So again, this was a, just a partial outline of the findings and that, and there's more included in the agenda report, but these were some of the key ones. In closing, staff recommends conditional approval of design permit DP-215, grading permit EX-415, and secondary dwelling unit permit SDU-215 for the staff memorandum, which contains the resolution with conditions of approval and findings.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone have any questions for the staff?
So you said that the variance expired, but tonight we're only considering the grading and aesthetics, is that correct?
Right, so the variance expired, I want to say, two years ago now, and so that had a deadline. In the interim, essentially, the, because of the concerns about limitations on ridge line lots and to have a, essentially, a better process for considering these kind of sites, the, the city council adopted ordinance specifically to allow for development of ridge line light lots, but through the design permit process. So it no, no longer requires a variance to develop on a ridge line lot.
But just to clarify, we are required to provide an opinion on the design permit?
Right, the design permit, the excavation permit, which is before you tonight, and the SDU.
Any other questions?
Well, I went through this two times, this particular project.
Right.
And the new material list, I like the color combination that the applicant has selected, but we'll wait until we go to the, towards the end after we listen to the public.
Applicant?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, no question.
Okay. So can we have a motion to open it to a public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to open this to the public.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to address the issue of 88 Thomas Avenue design permit and grading permit?
Good evening, commissioners and director and also planners. My name is Wing Lee, and I'm the applicant of the project, and I'm also the architect of the record. Well, first of all, thank you for taking time and reviewing this project, and for you maybe the second time.
Third time.
Oh, third time. So it's my honor to speak briefly on this design today, but the project planner, Mr. Johnson, covered pretty much all the, the essence of this project, but I'm going to highlight a few of them. So like what Mr. Johnson mentioned, this project basically fundamentally is, I would say 99% the same as what we presented six, seven years ago. And as you know, there were a lot of things happened, and a lot, a lot of things could happen in like five, six years, and so, but I want to make sure you understand that the owner has been very serious about this development, but because of the recession and some other personal reason, it did not happen. Right before the variance approval expired, the owner and, and the design team, including licensed civil engineer, structural engineer, soil report, I mean soil, geotechnical engineer, started to, started to work on the building permit application, but it took a little longer than everyone expected. But our civil engineer did meet with the city engineer and other engineering staff to resolve the stormwater issues. We have those in writing, and, and it's also documented in a letter, and some of those technical drawings also was submitted as part of this planning application for reference, but we are confident that all those technical issues have been resolved. So I'm going to just walk you through the site briefly, like what Mr. Johnson said, the site, if, if you're looking at the screen, north is up, so the highest point of the site is basically at the top left corner or the northwest corner, and it's sloping down towards the east or to the right of the screen. So the original design was very sustainable approach, with the sustainable approach in mind, and those sustainable kind of aspect includes like the cut and fill, the amount of excavation we're trying to do, but it's kind of like the chicken and egg thing, you don't want to see the building too high, but at the same time, you want to balance the cut and fill. But we are talking about plus or minus 1,000 cubic yard of regrading or excavation to respect the existing structure, instead of like demolishing that and then rebuilding the whole thing again. So that's one aspect of the sustainable design approach. And then the, the proposed drilling along the east side basically is more or less like view driven towards the bay or towards the east, and basically, the sensitive idea for proposing the massing is follow the topography so that everyone can enjoy the view to the bay. And also like what the planner mentioned and the orientation of the proposed, well, larger unit basically run along north-south direction. Different people may have different opinion on how, what would be the best orientation, but for single-family residential, I think this is a pretty good solution while we are addressing the view issue, and also the early sun minimizing and find a strategic way to handle the heat gain and heat loss in winter and summertime. So that's the sustainable aspect of the project, too. The smaller unit will have two bedrooms, basically is a smaller unit, but for a small young family like my clients, and when we first came here, we had like three, two girls and one boy, and all of them were single, but now two of them are married, and one of them is expecting a kid pretty soon in two months, just like this guy sent, sitting there. So I think this second unit will be good for a small, young family. Yep, so this is a one-story house. And then this is the ground floor plan of the bigger unit, and the development, once again, is for extended family and typical stuff. You have bedrooms and stairs, living room, open kitchen, and garage, and one thing I, I should mention is the owners really into the sustainable kind of building design. Element or system includes hydraulic radiant heat floor system for all three houses, and if you look at the upper part of the stairs, we also propose two external or outdoor systems for rain harvesting idea.
For what?
Rain harvesting from the roof, and then the upper floor, the second floor would only happen on the north side or the, the right, right-hand side of the screen. Basically, it's all bedrooms for, for the family. And then this is the roof, and they have a deck area on top of the kitchen area, and I think we went through this before, and these renderings are very conceptual design, but basically, we're trying to capture the view kind of idea looking east to the bay. And we went through this, and I'm more than happy to answer some question about the materials of the proposed buildings. The materials did change just because over the last like five, six years, there are a lot more sustainable materials out there for building skin design, so most of the materials we are proposing are highly sustainable. So these are some of the images from our landscape architects, and in terms, there will be some retaining wall at site, but I think our landscape architect did a wonderful job by downplaying the not-so-friendly kind of finishes like concrete surfaces by screening, screening them with bamboo and softer materials and landscaping. So that would be my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions for our applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. These natural fiber polymer composite panels, could you describe whether they met, meet the ASTM standards and in terms of what kind of composition is that?
Yeah, this is a pretty new materials. I think they have been around in US for maybe two years plus or minus, but they, they were made in Europe. The good thing is, Europe, I think they, they, in general, they spend a lot more time and money in all these sustainable materials, and this natural fiber composite panel, basically, they're made out of rice husk and common salt and also mineral oil, so water cannot penetrate there. So that means there's no molding, there's no sealing that will require, there's minimum repainting or refinishing the surface over time, so that's a wonderful materials.
How does it compare to the hardy plank?
The hardy plank is, well, it's different material, it's cement, sand, so both of them are very durable, and if you go down to like South San Francisco, Genentech, for example, they use extensively for all this exterior skin, and once again, you don't have to repaint it, and with the open or rain screen system, so to speak, so that you're not relying on, for example, like stucco or cementitious material so that water may penetrate into the materials, and then it depends on the sun, it relies on the sun to evaporate any moisture content get inside of the materials, so water will stay more or less outside or find a way to go down through gravity instead of evaporation.
Well, you can use the last turmeric paint for the stuccos, right?
Yep, that's true, but well, once you apply the surface treatment, then, you know, just a matter of time, five, 10 years, you have to set up the scaffolding and repaint it and touch it.
That's not, that's not true, though, because I've done it, and it's about 20, almost 18 years, it's still holding it.
Well, that's good.
It depend on the application, so anyhow, the, regarding the, the composite panels, do they meet the fire reading?
Yes, well... Yes, well, if they are not uh, uh, UL listed, they will not be able to uh, uh, carry their products in the US. So they passed the ASTM uh, uh, testing, all kinds of testing. Now, but for commercial use, that may be a different story when you get to certain heights, the uh, state or local fire department or marshal may have a different take on it.
So when you do the joint treatments, is a special way to do that, where two panels come joining together?
No.
Any process for so that the water doesn't leak through?
Well, there are different ways to do that, you could use the uh, more affordable way, more affordable way to uh, anchor the panel uh, by using exposed fasteners with the matching finish of the panel. So if you are ten, fifteen feet away, uh, I'm getting to that age too, you, you probably cannot see the fasteners. Or there are other ways you can put head channels uh, behind and you integrate some kind of track system behind the panel. And then you basically hang the panel onto the uh, track system and then the track system will be anchored onto the bearing wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other question I have is I remember we went extensively in the last two times I was on this project regarding the drainage issues and you said you worked with the city engineer?
Uh, not myself, but my, the civil engineer. Uh, I think two, well, for last two meetings we had, we didn't even have soil report. We didn't have um, civil engineer onboard. So it was more like planning and the variance, the view issue. But uh, uh, two years ago, the geotechnical engineer was onboard. Um, and the civil engineer was onboard, they, so they work hands in hand um, together to resolve the drainage issue. So it turns out uh, we have a lot of uh, 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 rock. So uh, the, the, the good thing is the foundation should be relatively uh, easier to propose. Uh, but, and uh, resolved by the structural engineer and the soil engineer. Uh, but the not-so-good thing is the rainwater, if it rains for a long time, then uh, there could be, it could be problematic for drainage. So uh, my uh, recollection was they came up with some kind of velocity reducer uh, at different location of the site to slow down uh, the potential stormwater uh, within the site.
But we don't have the copy of this or any kind of discussion on this?
Uh, back then, we didn't.
No, but do you have, it's not in this package, is it?
No, those, those kind of engineering level details would, would be um, looked at through the building permit process.
Yeah, the, the reason I'm asking is in the last two hearings, we had a lot of issues with that storm drainage. And that's why I was trying to figure it out, whether it was properly addressed and uh, but you know, I'm, I'm, I know that civil, the city engineer is gonna look into that. But I was interested to see how it was resolved, but we can leave it up to the city engineer, that's okay. Um, the, the other question I have is regarding the landscaping. You said there will be some bamboos will be used to, like a screening for the concrete walls?
That is correct.
Okay. And that's the one in one of these pictures here on the bottom, so.
Yep.
Okay. Um, as you know, the bamboo tra- travels quite a bit and, and uh, my concern is, uh, how are you gonna prevent it from going? Um, we don't want it to be an invasive speci- species. And so it has to be controlled and how are you gonna plan to do that or your landscape architect, how, what he proposes to do?
Well, our landscape architect is not here, but I think similar question came up uh, last hearing.
Yes.
Yes, so yes, uh, bamboo is super invasive and uh, but there are ways to con- contain them. Uh, for example, like uh, I remember plus or minus eight or ten mils of uh, polyurethane uh, bamboo barrier will, will do the job. And um, my house has like a small inner court with bamboo and um, there, the, the soil depth is plus or minus like maybe eighteen inches uh, right next to a retaining wall. But uh, with the black polyurethane um, eight mil kind of barrier, that will do the job.
Okay, just for the record that I think the, the city should look into that when they review the building plan permit. Because uh, otherwise it can go out of control, I've seen it many, many places. Okay, and as far as the, as the design itself is pretty modern design and uh, it, I, I mean, it, it's more square than any, any kind of contouring is not there. Basically, the boxes looks like from the views I have. And I, I think you're to, you're gonna play with the material to, to highlight some, some of these, these features that you have. Um, are you planning to, I mean, one of the views, you have a very small, these are windows, right?
That is correct.
Okay, is there any possible way to do any kind of trimming to ma- make it a little bit better? Like rather than just a rectangular piece with three small windows coming up?
Well, it depends on how you perceive a good design. So other than the look and the finishes, like what I mentioned before, uh, water usage is uh, number one concern. And also the energy use is also a, a, a key topic every time we propose any buildings, whether it's residential or, or commercial building. So if you look at the, the elevation you pointed to, that's a west elevation. So in terms of the um, uh, solar gain, for the east or the west is the same. But it's the accumulative heat gain in the west side, that will drive the energy to, to go up and how to cool all the occupant. So if you look at uh, both uh, residential uh, drawings, uh, both west elevation will have minimum or small windows. And you may see one big windows and that win- windows uh, happens to uh, be located right at the staircase, which you say not a habitable, inhabitable uh, room. Uh, and that, that's the reason that uh, we want to break up the uh, long facade along the north-south direction. Uh, but you have to find a balance, okay, what is more important, the look or the, the energy use and, and all that?
Yeah, I mean, um, I personally prefer a little bit bigger windows here and to, and little bit more trim so that you can highlight this area too, it looks like a little line of three windows. But it's up, you know, I'm not critical about that, I'm just making a comment that
Right.
that will look much better in my opinion, but each one has their own uh, test. And the other question I have is regarding solar uh, energy and you, you don't have any plans to put solar panels?
Um, at this point, the, well, the, I, I can speak on the half of the owner, the owner is not hundred percent committed to uh, photovoltaic uh, panels, but potentially maybe solar panel for uh, uh, domestic hot water with the uh, heat exchanger kind of idea would maybe is, is, I, I think we need to bring the mechanical engineer onboard. And uh, like what I said earlier, we, the owner is committed to uh, radiant heat floor system uh, with two boilers, one is for like domestic water and the other one is more like uh, dedicated for uh, heating in winter time.
Radiant heating, heating is a, is a little bit efficient, but I don't think it's that efficient to justify not to have the solar. And in this town, as you know, that we went through a big project and we recommended solar.
Yep.
Yeah, wholeheartedly. And here also, I recommend that you should incorporate the solar into this project, this is the opportunity to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And right now, the solar panels are at the lowest price you can buy. And not only that, the, the, you got a lot of incent- incentives from the government as well as a lot of con- contractors, they give, do it for almost nil by reducing your uh, you know, the energy cost. So this, this is the time you should do it because the, once the house is built, then you have to worry about this, the strength of the roof and all of that issues. Here you can, you can address all of that and you have a beautiful location where you, you can get a lot of sun.
You're right, yep.
And it's a prime location for solar energy uh, use. And I will strongly recommend uh, that it should be incorporated in this project. Okay, I don't have any more comments, uh?
I agree that solar ready is a great idea, even if they're not installed on the first. It's just not picking me up, even if they're not installed on the first day. What material was the roof, is that a metal roof or some other material?
The entire um, um, the, well, both, both unit most likely will be uh, with, will be built with uh, concrete foundation and wood frame building. I'm confident that with the span we are talking about, I don't think we will need any steel construction at all.
Roof material is what?
The, the
The roofing material.
The roof will be uh, wood framing and, or typical, and then on top of that, the roofing assembly will be most likely modified, modified uh, bitumen wool material, but no metal.
So it's a flat roof?
Yep, that is correct.
Just to add on to the boiler or the so- solar, I, I know what the radiant heat is, I have radiant heat. And sometimes maybe a compromise, you know, suggestion too, is that usually a, a minimal amount of solar panels can be used and they're already, it's already prepared, right? The boilers are, are, have hookup for solar panels, just for the system itself, so. Without having to go into the solar, you know, I think it's a good idea, there, there's a, there's a midpoint there too, you can look at that as a solution. Um, I wish I'd put, I didn't actually know my, my system had that ori- originally, sort of put solar panels on for the boiler. Uh, but it does have the attachment, I think yours probably does too, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so.
Do the building materials you've selected come in a variety of colors or pretty much the palette?
Um, that will be pretty much the uh, majority of the proposed exterior um, finishes, yep.
But the question is, are, do they come in a different type of colors than other than presented here? You have the color palette for this?
Um, they do have some other colors, but we are trying to stay uh, the majority of the larger surface will be more neutral uh, non-offensive kind of colors. And then uh, typically with one or two like warmer materials, like in this case, wood, wood-like materials. They're not real wood. Uh, so it's up for debate, some people like or prefer the real materials and they don't mind maintaining it, retaining it every two, three years, but yeah, but we uh, chose a more sustainable approach. Uh, yeah.
I just thought that it might harmonize better with the mountain if you did more of a green and tan rather than a gray and tan, but not want to stipulate color too strongly.
This is more metallic type of approach, all the, all your color scheme is basically gray, stainless steel and this is almost like a copper. So I think Commissioner Anderson's point is very well taken, that if you want to blend into the, you know, what the the, the natural topography is and uh, might, you may like to, to look into different and spending scheme.
Mm-hmm.
To have a little bit more like a earthy tone, tone, tones rather than more metallic tones. This is a more gray and, and the silver is look, looks more metallic.
I think the tans harmonize nicely with the, the mountain, it would be nice to have some
Then will be good, yeah.
Uh, may I address that too? Um, so I just wanna remind you the, well, the relatively area of each materials on the board does not with, reflect the uh, amount of materiality or system to be proposed on the, on the building. And uh, if you go back to the landscape drawings, there are plenty of green and landscape uh, element there too. Um, and we are very sensitive in terms of um, metal that are incorporated into the materials because potentially glare or reflection is a no-no to anyone or neighbors or you know, even people um, operating a vehicle, driving up the uh, San Bruno Avenue. Sometimes depends on the sun angle and all that, so um, uh, nothing we're proposing here is highly reflective. Um, the, and of course, because of the aluminum windows, but they are not like high gloss, super reflective or even the glazing itself, uh, they are tinted because, well, typically bec- we, we have to address the uh, energy requirement per uh, state requirement. But nothing tinted or reflective glazing uh, system.
I, I was referring to page G one forty-two, the west and south elevations, they show, you know,
Yeah.
very large gray walls and, and I just thought that those areas might look nicer as more of a green and tan instead of a gray and tan. But that's just a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there should be some landscaping there because it's just a long wall. Was, is it there in your proposed landscaping plan, it's left out here or it's not there?
Not in my presentation, but uh, it was submitted to the planning department. Just because I'm not a landscape architect, I don't want to.
No, I mean, just to go, to break up the, this whole
Right.
horizontal, the this tree in the back, but not in the, oh, there is some in the front here, huh?
There is.
Yeah, there is some here.
I actually found it um, pleasant, I thought it was a nice contrast. And I actually look at the cement or the grayish as sort of bringing up the land from the bottom, i.e. the rocks just lay at the bottom of the, of the house. So I actually had a different perspective, so I'm not, um, I don't find that a necessary uh, change. Um, the recommendations there, but um, in addition to that, I wanted to ask that and speak to G point one, point one zero, we're talking about conditions of approval. So for number two, we are, are addressing the landscape maintenance agreement, right? That has to happen prior to construction even. So I think those things are kind of covered in terms of landscaping, right? With, and also um, how it harmonizes with the um, environmental concerns. So it has to also, under number five, the property owners must comply with the operating program recommended by HCP management, correct? And that is uh, with, in conjunction with the San Bruno Mountain, Mountain Area Habitat Conserv- Conservation Plan, right? Can, so I think those things um, noted for the record indicates that those uh, issues that we had discussed earlier that was raised by um, Commissioner Munir are being addressed here, also in terms of the drainage.
It's not addressed here, HCP is nothing to do with the, with what we're talking about, the landscaping and and bringing the landscaping to, to enhance the end exterior.
No, I'm saying that it
Just to comply with the HCP requirement.
No, it also says that there's a landscape maintenance agreement that must happen. And I'm assuming that these recommendations will be in the record so that when you discuss this prior to the construction, it will be considered and, and discussed and po- potentially included as per the parties involved in that agreement, correct?
What we're making the recommendation here is that we, they should sub- incorporate something to, to cover this blanket space here. And uh, that may not be part of the maintenance agreement, but it's part of the recommendation from the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
So when you go to the maintenance agreement, that's nothing to do, that's already set in concrete when you, you get the permit. And it's an ongoing thing, the maintenance agreement that you're gonna maintain it this way, it's not the same as what you're gonna do from the, in get go in the, from the beginning to start with. So that's why the Commissioner Anderson and I recommending that it should be looked at it by your, your landscape architect and see if he can bring some green and other colors to it so that it breaks the monotony.
For the, for the record, I was referring to the color of the wall, not to the plants, but it was only a recommendation.
Right, so I just, also, it says here that landscaping application um, via separate form and fee will, will require the approval, the approval of the final landscaping plans will be subject to the planning director approval. So I'm assuming since the planning director is here and he's hearing this conversation, that it will be incorporated as part of the dialogue. So then the application will include the conversations that we have had here. So I'm saying that I think that that means that it's been considered. I mean, you can only write it so specifically that you start to cut things out, right? So.
No, we're not gonna make a landscaping plan for them, it's just for the planning No, we're not going to make a landscaping plan for them. It's just for the planning directors to keep in mind when he's reviewing it. And that's what we're doing here is making some recommendations for the, in the record. And also as far as the color goes, I think I agree with Commissioner Anderson that there should be this, the color scheme is more metallic in my opinion than, I agree with you that there should be something to match, match in with the existing ground color.
Yeah. And the, in terms of the invasiveness of the potential bamboo that's possibly going to be planted there, I think that the final landscape plan needs to be at a minimum. I think there's a percentage of minimum California native and low to very low water plants, right? That would be recommended by.
Yes.
The San Bruno. Mountain agreement, no?
Right.
Right. So I think that's incorporated here as a condition as well prior to our, to our approval. So that and then this stormage, storm water, best management practices applies during construction. Would that have any need to be considered as part of prior to construction? Meaning material wise or any recommendation thereof?
So they, they have specific requirements that, that they will need to follow during, actually as part of the building permit application, they, they will comply with the best management practices. Also, the state has what's under C three regulations, state water board. Now this is, it's, it's as a single family home, they have some, a certain checklist that, that we will go through with them. And they've already filled out that as a preliminary. So we have confidence that they can meet the requirements on storm water and then best management practices, of course, during construction to, to minimize storm water impacts. So yes, and, and also inspections in the field to confirm that, that those are being followed.
Right. So under applications, number eight, grading, paving and drainage plans, including details for widening the street per BMC code section, blah, blah, blah. That also would require city engineer approval, correct? So therefore, we're assuming that the experts are all at the table and the stakeholders are there.
And on, on the bamboo, going back to that, we, we could, as the applicant mentioned, there are root barriers that, that are specific for invasive type species. And so we can include that and make sure that if they have bamboo that, there's different types. Some are clumping and some are runners and, and that they have included a, a root barrier completely surrounding that area so it doesn't get out of hand. And that's, that's to their benefit as well. I don't think they want to see the bamboo escape where they intend it to, to be. So we can make sure that's in the landscape plan when it ultimately comes to us.
Actually, the landscape plan is very good. They are looking at the, at the pictures.
Oh, thank you.
Nicely done.
I will let them know.
Very nicely done.
I don't have any other questions? Anyone else? No?
No, everything's been addressed.
Okay, I think we had a couple of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lips? Mr. Hubert Chan?
All right. Well, good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Hubert and I'm the son of the property owner of eighty-eight Thomas Avenue. Our proposal to build the property on eighty-eight Thomas Avenue was approved in two thousand nine. And we were very happy, very grateful and very appreciative for the opportunity to build our dream home in the city of Brisbane. We said to ourselves, we've come along so far and worked so hard with our architect to make our dream a reality. Gosh darn it, let the variances expire and our dream did not seem like a reality anymore. Why did we let the variances slip out of our hands? We simply thought we were ready, but we weren't. Because we just did not have enough sufficient funding for the project. My second older sister was relocating to many cities and states in the east coast for rotations in medical school. I was finishing up my prereqs for pharmacy school and I was also relocated when I was accepted. Lydia, my second older sister, and I thought we had it hard in our professional graduate schools, but it is actually ten times harder for what my parents went through to be able to have a life here in America. My parents have worked every day of their lives to get to where we are today and they worked hard for not themselves but for their children so that we would never have to go through what they went through. Now that Lydia and I have graduated and with my oldest sister Hannah, who has a stable career, my parents are not alone anymore. We can help. We can have, we can have our parents take a breather, but they still need to take care of the grandchildren when they arrive. My sister due in November. Commissioners of City of Brisbane, we are here tonight to let you know that once again, we are ready for the same project that was previously approved. It's for our family and our only, our family only and not for making a profit by flipping a property or renting it out. We actually look forward to the next step in commencement of the construction, finally become a part of Brisbane, the city of stars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Chan?
No, well said.
Nice, thank you.
So multi-generational dwelling then?
I'm sorry?
So it's a multi-generational dwelling?
Yeah, it will be.
That's awesome.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbara Ebel?
Hi, Barbara Ebel. I'm always up here. So I congratulate you on how far you've come. I, I wish I was in your shoes. I wish I was building a house. It's like got to be the biggest dream anybody can have. So I want to say a few things because I want you to get the best out of your house. Passive solar, kind of, there are kind of some real basic things. The basic thing is, and I'm supposed to address them, but I'm, you know, talking to you too. Please don't feel rude. I'm turning my back on you. But the general idea is to put the long axis, the, long axis of the building east-west to maximize the solar gain from the south. I understand why they didn't choose to do that. There's some site constraints and some view, and some views that they wanted to capture. But I am a little perplexed by the complete lack of overhangs on the, I think that's the accessory unit with all the southern windows, but they don't have any overhangs. And the whole idea with southern windows is overhangs is that when the high, sun is at a high angle in the summer, the overhangs shield the windows and basically cut off your gain. And in the winter, when the sun is low, the sun cuts under the overhangs and heats the house. So big southern windows without overhangs is going to A, cause overheating in the summer and B, cause heat loss in the winter. So that is contrary to passive solar design. Also, the big unit doesn't have any southern windows. So there's no passive gain there, right? So if it was my house, I would ask the architect to work on that because if you really want to make the house sustainable and energy efficient, this design is not going to do that to the best of its ability. And I think that was the main thing I wanted to say. I'm in the process of rereading Title Six for my own edification, but I haven't gotten through it yet. But I'm pretty sure that PV ready is required. And it's certainly a lot cheaper to put it in when you're building the house than to try and retrofit the electrical system. And also particularly if you're doing a, a bitumen roof, putting the brackets in so that they, you don't have to then drill through the membrane and cause potential leaks down the road. It's a really, really, really good idea. But again, that would, I think, I don't actually think that's even their decision. I think it's required to be PV ready. And I think it'd also be a good idea for them to make it solar hot water ready. Because again, those pipes go in the walls. It's a lot easier to do it up front. And I'm really happy that they're doing rainwater harvesting and I'm wondering what size cistern they're putting in. Because I was very, I, I pretty much laughed at the people at eight Thomas when they put in a seven hundred and fifty gallon cistern. That's one unit of water. The typical household goes through like four units of water a month in irrigation. So I mean, what is one unit of water? That's like five bucks worth of water. So I was hoping they could tell me what size cistern they're putting in because if they got this roof and they're trying to cut down on erosion, potential erosion of the hillside, then having a really big cistern is a really good idea. And I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some very good points, Barbara.
Would the applicant or the architect like to address them?
Sure, if I could. Well, thank you for the comments. And as I mentioned before, it's a balancing act. And ideally, yes, all building will be organized along the east-west orientation and then, but there are different schools of thought about, well, if you orient the long building along the east-west then the, you are really segregating the southern portion of the building from the northern side of the building. So, so it's different interpretation. But in this case, we're talking about one-story residential project and if we are talking about winter time, then the living room area or you have above the inhabitable area, just a roof. So it's, it could be pretty amazing how, how much heat the, or the UV can actually penetrate through the roof assembly into the inhabitable area. I am not a plumbing engineer or mechanical engineer, but I, we will work with a plumbing engineer to size the appropriate system. Primarily is for the irrigation, not the erosion control. Yes. So that's my response.
Regarding your comments for the, the penetration through the roof, you have the insulation, so there is no penetration from there because it's preventing the, the heat coming from the roof as well as getting out of the house. So that comment, I just want to correct that for you. And system design, I think you have to figure out the, your irrigation water need. And based on that, you can determine what size you're going to put in.
Right.
So that's, that's a, you know, design issue.
Right.
Permit issue.
Could you, could you address the overhang comment as well, please?
Well, like what I said, it's a balancing act. Ideally, well, if you talk to a mechanical engineer running an energy model, he or she will say no window along the west side or minimum windows on the south side with overhang or bisole or other devices. But the technology has come so far that there are other ways to deal with the high angle along the south side or even the low angle in the east side or the west side. For example, shade or drapery, whether it's manual or mechanical with motor, you know, even like six years ago when I came here talking about motorized shade, the wiring was a lot more intense than today's technology with single phase. We're talking about like one touch of the button, like the entire house could be reconfigured, so to speak, to manage the natural light or glare or heat gain and, you know. Ideally, yes, I can try to convince the owner to even put submitting in the south side, east side, west side to measure all this daily data. But well, this is a single family house and it's not a lab. We as a professional, we try our best to convince and educate our client. But there are the design parameters we have to consider. For example, like the small windows, I understand you, one of the commissioner may have huge concern, yeah. So, but the programmatic requirement from, for the inside, basically they are bathrooms. So how much more windows you want to please the exterior articulation? But yeah, well, and then we have the address privacy issue and some other issues.
All three are bathroom windows, all of these three that you.
The, there are two, the two on the left, full bath windows with operable windows. And then the little guy right next to that is a kind of like a den, open work area. Nowadays, everyone want their iPad and stuff.
My, my only concern was that it looks like a narrow windows, you know? If you have the kind of a balanced dimensions height and width, it will look a little bit better. This looks like a pencil.
Right. Yeah, when, well, I don't know, I can only speak for myself.
They have the like rectangular windows and, you know, sometimes they are higher than the, in the width wise. So this is the, is the opposite.
Right. Well, the interior program space behind the windows are basically showers. So we're talking about.
You're going to put on the top of the shower.
As long as they're reachable for typical height individual, they can open the windows instead of hundred percent relying on mechanical fan for ventilation. I think that may be a good practice, but I, I hear what you're saying. Ideally, when I'm taking a shower, then I don't know the, I don't know the, how, how low the window seal should be so that I feel comfortable or I may feel comfortable, but other people may not want to see.
If you on top of the shower, then, then it makes sense. But if you, if you're putting on top of the toilet area, then you can have a more vertical type of windows rather than longitudinal.
Yep.
The longitudinal looks kind of, you know, vertical windows will look a little better, in my opinion. But again, just a suggestion.
Yep. Thank you. And now the questions?
No, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No? Okay. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So do we want to deliberate further or are we ready to?
Well, I have a question for staff, semi-related. I was wondering if PV ready or solar ready is currently required under Section Six or Brisbane Building Codes?
That's my recollection as well and, and they're, yeah. And the codes keep, every three years we have a new cycle and they get stricter and stricter. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think we ran into that issue before and I remember one of us asking that same question and I think the answer was yes as well.
Actually, I recommend that there should be, they should consider installing the solar panels. I'm not saying they should require, but considering the, the recommendation. Because we are the one that push the solar power, energy, you know? We are the guardian of the environment, whatever you call that. So I think it's a good idea for all of these type of projects. We should recommend that they should go for the solar energy.
Yeah, the payback schedule is getting shorter and shorter.
Yeah. And the prices have come down so much that it's makes a lot of sense. And if you do it when you're building it, it's even cheaper because after retrofit is more expensive. So think about it and I think you're going to save money in the long range because you don't have to worry about PG&E anymore if you're going to put enough wall. And looks like the size of your building, you, you can have a very good array of solar panels generate more than enough power for your building. Because you got a flat roof and a perfect setup.
Yeah, good location.
So I, I think we should add that to the, to the, one of the recommendations. If all the other commissioners agree with that.
So where would that be added?
You can just include it in whatever motion's made as an advisory recommendation. Not sure condition it'll be, but we'll just plug it in as, you know, as an advisory condition.
Okay.
Thank you.
So would someone like to make that motion?
I will make a motion to approve the eighty-eight Thomas Avenue Design Permit DP dash two dash fifteen. I will make a motion to approve the eighty-eight Thomas Avenue Design Permit DP dash two dash fifteen grading permit EX dash four dash fifteen. Do we have to approve the grading permit too, or it's, it's in the purview of the civil engineer, city engineer?
Yes, you need to, um, approve that as well, and then it's essentially recommending city, um, engineer approval of the techno, he'll look at the technical details, you're looking at it relative to the design, so. Formally, you're just making a recommendation to the city engineer to issue the permit. He'll actually, you're not, you're not approving the grading.
Yeah, but the thing is, it's, it's a common practice for any, any building to have the general, the grading permit, even if a small project. So I don't know why we had to go through this all the time, but maybe that's what.
Is this because of the yardage?
I guess so.
In the code, or under a certain yardage, um, the city engineer can approve it. If it's over a certain yardage, then the planning commission needs to make a recommendation.
So how much yardage, yardage is this is above the recommend?
Eleven hundred or something like that?
That's about eleven hundreds cubic yards.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, and secondary dwelling unit permit SDU dash two dash fifteen. So that's the, my motion.
Okay, I second it.
And with the, excuse me.
Oh.
With the additional recommendations that we made regarding the bamboo, uh, polyurethane, whatever the required
Barrier.
Barrier, and also the recommendation, which is to look at the solar panels, installation of solar. Is there any, anything else you want to add? And the landscaping plan, that will be part of the landscaping review, so those two additions.
As advisory, uh, conditions.
Yes. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, once again.
Thank you.
This is the third time, don't ask me to come back fourth time, okay? I don't know whether I'll be around.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Through, through the chair, if you don't mind reading the, um, appeals process.
Oh, I always, I always do at the end to do, is that okay?
But they might be leaving, so I think.
Oh, okay, it has to be, okay, while the applicant's here. The appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council. Appeal shall be filed with the city clerk not later than fifteen calendar days following the planning commission's decision. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at four one five five zero eight two one one zero.
Okay, so the ball is in your court, let's hope you don't come back for the third time.
Next time we'll apply solar panels.
Fourth time.
And it'll be green.
Hey, no threats, no threat. Good night.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So, um, on to new business, number two, public hearing zoning text amendment RZ dash four dash one six. Zoning text amendments to Title sixteen subdivisions and Title seventeen zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Code, BMC to update existing subdivision and public noticing regulations to be consistent with current California Government Code and Civil Code requirements, and to amend the discretionary review process for newly constructed condominium developments. Staff report? Oh, okay, sure.
Sorry about that technology break. Um, so, good evening commissioners. The proposed text amendments before you tonight, um, address three areas of the subdivision ordinance regulations and zoning regulation. And restructuring our presentation tonight in sections, so we'll address one topic first, allow for questions and conversation with staff, and then before we move on to the next, so hopefully we'll be able to get a comprehensive review. So, the proposed amendments, um, address certain segments of the subdivision ordinance, um, particularly, particularly pertaining to parcel map and tentative map waivers that already exist in our code and are governed by the subdivision map act as well. Um, the, it would also address the discretionary review process for new condominium projects, um, and also address, uh, public noticing requirements for zoning text amendments and, um, other amendments that are governed by noticing requirements in the government code. Oops. So we'll begin with the subdivision ordinance amendments. So just a quick overview of subdivision law in California. Um, subdivisions, which are the creation consolidation or eliminations of lots, are governed by the subdivision map act, which is located in the California Government Code. Cities and counties administer the act. Um, and the type of maps required for developments depends on the size of the development, so either number of lots or number of units. Uh, tentative maps are required for larger projects of five or more units or parcels, while parcel maps are required for four or fewer housing units or parcels. Brisbane subdivision regulations are contained in Title sixteen. Um, so again, this is where we establish our lot improvement requirements, minimum area requirements, um, different infrastructure requirements for new development. It does not regulate land use, uh, zoning, or specific design of projects. So it's talking about the property itself and whatever improvements are necessary to make it ready for development. Um, we have a little bit different terms of art in our subdivision ordinance compared to the subdivision map act. We refer to tentative and final subdivision maps for, um, projects of five or more units or parcels, and also tentative and final parcel maps for the smaller level of development. Um, so germane to the, uh, proposed text amendments tonight, the Brisbane subdivision ordinance contains a waiver procedure for final, um, subdivision maps for condo projects on a single parcel. That's the only type of subdivision map that could be waived, um, and final parcel maps. The planning commission is the body authorized to approve those waivers, and it's processed in tandem with a tentative um, subdivision or parcel map application. In order to approve the waiver, you can see here on the screen and listed in the staff report as well, there are a number of, uh, required findings to be made. You know, essentially verifying that the project complies with all of the minimum requirements for uh, site design and improvement established in our subdivision ordinance. So the proposed amendments, um, to Title sixteen, they would update the existing parcel map and subdivision map waiver procedures um, to more fully comply with the requirements of the government code. Uh, they would also update references to outdated civil code sections throughout Title sixteen. So moving specifically on to the proposed amendments to the parcel map waiver process. Um, the government code subdivision map act requires that cities adopt a waiver procedure for all stages of a parcel map. So again, the subdivision map act refers to parcel maps, our ordinance refers to tentative and final parcel maps. Um, the current waiver procedure applies to final parcel maps only. So the proposed amendments would expand the waiver procedure to apply to all stages of a, of a parcel map, which is consistent with the government code requirements. Um, it would also authorize the planning director to process that map waiver, um, as an administrative function. This is consistent with what other jurisdictions do in San Mateo County, I've listed some references here. Other cities have their city engineer, um, as the authorizing party. And then, um, again, we do have a, in our code, a waiver process for sub, final subdivision maps only for condominium projects on a single parcel. Um, so again, the proposed amendments would expand that existing waiver procedure to all stages of subdivision map, which is allowed in the government code reference there. Um, and similarly to the parcel map waiver, it would also authorize the planning director to process that as an administrative, um, act. And just to clarify, the same findings would have to be made, so the findings that appear um, here on this slide, um, no changes would be made to the findings that have to, that must be made in order to approve the waiver. And I will pause, here are four questions and clarifications.
Where in Brisbane can condos be built right now, R three and NRCO or?
Um, so condos are allowed in the SCR O one district. Um, we have, let me pull up, actually. Bear with me, can pull up our code. Yeah, multifamily. Correct. Um, yeah, so our R two and R three districts, the residential district, as well as, um, NCR O one, SCR O one, and I believe that's it, because the others are all commercial districts.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, um, e- earlier when we were discussing the chart, will you be going through that?
Yeah, that's in the next portion, so we're ready to move on?
Yes.
No more questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So moving on to the proposed condo regulation amendments. So again, some background on condo regulations. Um, the state governs the general rules for creating, managing, and operating new residential condominiums. Um, it's in an act called the Davis Sterling Act, and it's located in the Civil Code. Um, and condo developments are also, uh, regulated as subdivisions under the subdivision map act. The, um, current regulations for condos in Brisbane's municipal code, again, are located in the subdivision ordinance, Title sixteen, and the zoning ordinance, which requires, um, various discretionary permits for, um, right, either new condo developments or conversions of existing rental properties into condominiums. Um, so those regulations are contained in chapter seventeen point three zero. Um, conversion of existing rental properties into condos requires a CUP that's actually a requirement in our housing element. Uh, new condominiums would require not only a conditional use permit, but also a design permit. Um, condos must al- also comply with development regulations of the underlying zoning district, so as regarding lot coverage, building height, floor area, that sort of thing, just like any other residential project. There are also specific development standards for condominiums, uh, which include a minimum amount of storage per unit, minimum amounts of outdoor living space, et cetera, um, and those are located in the condominium regulation chapter. Uh, the proposed amendments to the condo regulations would, um, update outdated civil code references, uh, both in Title sixteen and seventeen. Uh, propose elimination of the CUP requirement for new condominiums. Um, and it would also, um, retain the design permit requirement, um, for projects of three or more units, which is consistent with the design permit applicability standards that exist currently. Um, no changes are recommended to the existing CUP process for condo conversions. Um, so. So the intent behind, um, the intent behind the proposed text amendments are uh, to reduce redundancies and project approval findings and streamline applica- application review. Uh, the design permit process, as I'll go over in the upcoming slides, reviewing that table referenced by the chair. Um, the design permit standards would continue to apply to new, uh, condominium projects and contain development and community impact standards, um, that are intended to be covered by the use permit. Um, city staff would continue to review condominium plans and governing documents. Um, those are governed again by the state civil code. Staff has, has always reviewed them and would, would still, uh, it's a ministerial process. Um, so, and in terms of project streamlining, again, we do have obligations in our housing element to pursue whatever avenues are feasible to streamline new development processes. Um, and I'll remind them that condominiums, which are for sale units, are subject to our inclusion, inclusionary housing ordinance. Here is that table. Um, so, I, I won't go over everything in the table, I'll just summarize, the reason we included it in the staff report was more to illustrate, again, the, the redundancies or overlap in the design permit findings, the thirteen design permit findings compared to the two findings for the use permit. So use permit findings are really addressing compatibility with adjacent uses and structures, compliance with general plan or specific plan if there is one. Um, consideration and, and no impact to the general health, safety, comfort, or welfare, um, not injurious or detrimental to property or, or the general welfare of the city. So, the use permit findings are addressed in one way or another by, again, all thirteen of the de- design permit findings which are listed here. So the comparison process, again, is more just to illustrate, nothing is lost in terms of actual community impact consideration, um, and discretionary, levels of discretionary review by eliminating the use permit requirement, because the design permit findings address, address those issues. And I'll pause again for questions. No?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so the last area that the amendments would address is in public noticing requirements. So, again, the California Government Code does establish, um, requirements for public hearing noticing. Um, the noticing requirements that we are, uh, that the text amendments address are specifically for public hearings for zoning amendments. Um, zoning ordinance amendments and text amendments, such as the one we are discussing tonight. Um, in our zoning ordinance, we have a chapter seventeen point five four, which addresses public noticing um, for zoning ordinance amendments affecting real property, um, as well as for discretionary permits. Um, there are also, in miscellaneous chapters, um, such as the variance and use permit chapters of the zoning code, that also reference noticing requirements that are redundant, um, compared to the requirements in seventeen point five four. Um, so the proposed amendments to the noticing regulations would clarify the noticing requirements for zoning ordinance amendments for, that are citywide in scope, so not changing a specific property or properties from one zoning designation to another. Um, it would also add, um, design permit and plan development permits to the list of required, um, hearings to be noticed in the chapter seventeen point five four. Existing language only refers to variance and use permit hearings. Um, it would also eliminate references throughout, uh, to publishing notices in a newspaper of general, general circulation. Um, BMC chapter one point one two, uh, declares that there's no newspaper of general circulation in the city. So, where previously there were references to publication in the, in a newspaper of general circulation, we've recommended that those references be removed. And again, I'll pause for questions. Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Well, that actually concludes the presentation.
Wow, let you go. Easy.
Any other questions for our staff?
Well, it seems that even if we did happen to disagree with anything, and here it is California law, right?
Right, exactly.
Can't do anything.
Good summary.
I really like the charts, thank you, I appreciate it. So I just wanted to, for the record, share that, um, prior to the meeting, Julia and I were discussing the chart on G dash, uh, D, G dot two dot one nine, and I was wanting to make sure that I actually read it correctly. And so when you see that the X is not under the use permit findings, where it says, um, the column not detrimental to health, safety, comfort, and general welfare, not injurious or detrimental to the property or general welfare of the city, the reason why number two, so the orientation, location of building structures, open spaces, and other features integrate well with each other and maintain a compatible relationship to adjacent development, the reason why there's not an X there is not because, um, the, um, CUP does not find, or the design permit does not find that to be true, but simply that this criteria, the orientation and location, does not apply to, to that finding. Therefore, eliminating the CUP would not cause us to miss anything. And so I was kind of reading into it, and I wanted to make sure that, um, that was shared.
Can you clarify that a little bit better?
Did I just muddle it up more?
Um, so I think the question was for the column on the So I think the question was for the column on the, the two columns on the far right, where basically staff has marked with an X for the specific design permit finding, how that may or may not respond to the specific use permit findings. It's really more meant to show how the findings relate to each other. So just like the chair was saying, some findings in the design permit will address one finding in the use permit and not another, but that does not mean that, on a whole, all the findings when considered together do not, they do respond to both findings in a variety of ways and actually more in-depth manner. They actually kind of break down the points of the use permit into more specific and like project-specific ways. It's actually a lot, I think, easier to, you know, to direct an applicant to look at the design permit findings and respond to those and make sure that they are addressed in their application versus the use permit findings, which are a little more generalized. So again, the point of this table was, again, to just illustrate relationship between the two sets of findings and emphasize the point that, as the chair said, nothing is lost if the CUP is eliminated. The design permit findings address compatibility with adjacent uses and structures. They address general plan and specific plan compliance. All of the things that are addressed by the use permit are also addressed by the design permit findings.
I'm still confused, but we'll go on. No, no, it's okay.
Anyone else?
Makes sense.
No? Good, okay. So I think our deliberation's complete. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion guy.
Open the public.
Oh, sorry, oh, I didn't know.
Public hearing, yeah.
Do, we need to have a, to open it to a public hearing? Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to open it to public comment. I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that. Does anyone in the audience want to address this issue?
Come on Barbara.
Oh, stop teasing her. So can we make a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now, do we have any further deliberation?
No.
No?
Motion that we comply with California law.
We're not going to comply with California.
Resolution of zoning text amendment RZ four dash sixteen, for amendments to Title sixteen subdivisions and Title seventeen zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Code.
So you're making a motion, so?
Yeah, he just made a motion, we need a second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
It was easy, Julia.
That's because you did such a good job.
Yeah.
With the analysis.
Yeah.
Okay, so. I guess I should make a appeals process, do I need to do the appeals process again? No, right?
No, not this one.
Okay. Okay, items initiated by the staff.
Just for the commissions aware, the council will start their Baylands hearings next week, the twenty-ninth, with a workshop, it's gonna be an overview kind of workshop, that's all I have.
Thank you. Items initiated by the commission, we have a memo here.
Sorry, I do have one other item, and that is that the council did at their last meeting, discussed the planning commission recruitments and the openings, you know, the extended terms to, for the Baylands to finish, and it was the council's direction to, given the length of time that's lapsed since the applications were due and accepted, to go ahead and open up the, the application process again to any commissioners who are interested in reapplying, as well as to the public at large, so. You'll, any commissioner whose term is pending or expired will be getting contacted by the city clerk.
Didn't we get the new city clerk yet, or?
There's an interim appointment, or acting, I guess, interim, which is Ingrid Padilla, and she was working in, in the city manager's office.
Okay, any items initiated by the commission is here in the memorandum, standards for home sizes, lot coverage, floor area ratio, and central for Brisbane. So how do we normally proceed with that? Do we, do we just have a discussion?
I guess the question is.
Based on the memo that was?
Well, I mean, the memo was just to provide the basic information for reference. You know, collectively as a commission, you can decide, you know, what, what you want to do with this information, whether you want to have more research done or explore it further, or if you have some specific action you want the council to initiate, you know, that would be an outcome of whatever your discussion is, I would think. I can help you with that once you get, you know, there.
I suggest maybe we should review it and bring it as an agenda item after, in the next meeting or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, especially since we're short one member.
Right.
It would be fine with me if we discussed this. We're all here. In depth, and we're all here.
So we'll just continue it. At this point, we're not, we'll just provide the same basic information, it's really for the commission to have a discussion, really, and go from there, so we won't be providing any more information for the next.
That's fine, yeah. I think one of the main purposes of this discussion is whether we want you to spend time to do that.
Exactly.
No, we want you to spend, since we're free now. Okay.
So that will be continued, and we are ready to adjourn.
No, 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 I have one item.
Oh, you have an item, another item to initiate?
The resolution we prepared for the Baylands, there's one item that was not included in there, which was the size of the solar area that Mr. Zola suggested, hundred-plus acres, and I think it was not included in our resolution, am I correct?
No, it was actually included as a particular subarea, and I don't remember an acreage of a hundred acres, but your recommendation had a map and a narrative, and there was an approximate acreage to each of those subareas? And that was part of?
Some of the people contacted me and it said, how come you didn't mention that? And it should be clarified that it should be at least hundred-plus acres, so that's why I'm bringing it up to, because Zola's, I know what you're talking about, but it's not specific in terms of how much acreage we are locating.
I'll look into that and we'll report back.
If it's possible, maybe we can clarify the resolution a little bit, or when it goes before the council.
Well, we'll see what the record is and certainly I'll be in touch with the chair if there's some further.
Yeah, I mean, that was the concern mentioned.
Okay, yeah, we'll check into that.
I wanted to bring it to the attention, your attention.
That's great, okay, yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay. And I don't have any other further comments here, and I just want to go ahead if you adjournment, since I'm a motion guy, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, till the next meeting, which is on?
October thirteenth.
October thirteenth.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much.